You don't even have to, well, it still will blink and do all that. Okay.
Everybody ready?
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, December 16th, 2020. As always, we begin our deliberations with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. While Pastor Don comes to the podium, I want everybody to give the police officers in the room a hand because I can't thank anyone.
Councilman Byrd and Councilman Gallo, thank you for all the years that you have served us. Mayor Poston, thank you for being such a great friend and a father to the friendly city, its people, its leaders, the family in blue, and all department personnel. Thank you for being a friend of God, honoring Him, His church, His ministers, and embracing the things of God for the good of our community. Mrs. Poston, thank you for sharing your husband for so long with so many of us. Let us pray. Would you bow your heads? Father of heaven and earth, I come to you in the name of Jesus, asking for your blessings on this, the last meeting of 2020, blessing those who have served so faithfully, and blessing those who are now our new leaders, City Council, and our new mayor, Mayor Brown. I declare the word of the Lord over them all, found in Jeremiah 29:11, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, plans to prosper you, not to harm you, plans to give you a hope and a future. I pray for the perfect loving will of the Father, the brilliant mind of Christ, and the powerful influence of the Holy Spirit to reveal and reflect the plans for Bradenton. I pray for the fruit of heaven's garden to prosper in our city, love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness. I declare that the greatest days in Bradenton are before us, prospering on every way and every front for every citizen, declaring your kingdom to come and your will to be done in the friendly city as it is in heaven. And now to close in the words of the great Apostle Paul, found in Philippians 4, summing it up all, friends, I'd say, "You do best by filling your minds and meditating on things that are true, noble, reputable, authentic, compelling, gracious, the best and not the worst, the beautiful and not the ugly, things to praise and not things to curse. Put into practice what you have learned from me and what you have heard and saw and realized. Do that, and God, who makes everything work together, will work you into His most excellent harmonies." I pray this all in the name of the Father, Jesus the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Please join Councilman Gallo in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir. We have no proclamations this morning and no presentations. We'll be right, ready for citizen comments.
At the point of the meeting, if a citizen comment, anyone who wishes to address the council on any non-item, become to the podium, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, can you take this off?
Thank you.
I didn't know if I was supposed to sign up or anything. Was I supposed to sign up to speak? I didn't know.
Would you like to be sworn?
No, no. At, at, no, no. My name is Michelle Britton. I reside at 7411 Riverview Drive in Bradenton. That's in the county, but for most of my life, I've been a citizen of the city of Bradenton. And I would just like to take this time this morning to thank Councilman Gallo. I have known Gene mostly all my life. He was here for my very first council meeting, and I wanted to be here for yours, your final one. Gene has been a pillar of this community, and I thank you. I thank you for your service to this city. You've made it a better place to be, a safer place to be, and a happier place to be. Sixty years, fire department, fire chief, council. It's commendable. Now, Gene always said, when I was working with him, that he was a representative for Ward 1, but he actually works for the entire city. And he proved that time and time again. It didn't matter, it didn't matter what ward you lived in. You could call him up with an issue and a concern, and he would do his best to take care of it. And that's true. So, Gene, thank you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for your service to this city. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the love of your life, Pat, looking down on you and saying, "Good job, Gene," or Baby, or Honey, whatever she called you. She called me sugar. I don't know what she called you. I know, I know she called me sugar. So, thank you. Thank you for your dedication, your commitment, and your love for this city. And enjoy your retirement. It's well deserved, my friend. Mayor Poston, I was here for the very first council meeting that you presided over, and I wanted to be here today for you. I sat right next to you for many years. I didn't know you at first.
I still have the bruises.
Yeah, because I kicked you a lot. That's true. That's true. I admit it. But I didn't know you at first. I didn't know your lovely wife, Mickey, but we became very fast friends. And we worked well together for years in this city. And I know that when you came to the city, you had goals. But I think those goals turned into vision. And we can look around the city and see the vision that you had. Businesses, streetscapes, Riverwalk, Regatta, Blues Fest, all of them have your thumbprint on it. It's a wonderful legacy to look back and see. So, to you, I say thank you. Thank you for the service to this city. Twenty-one years? Twenty-one years, the city of Bradenton. It's been an honor to call you my friend. So, good luck on your retirement. Thank you for your dedication and your commitment and your leadership to this city. That's it. Thanks, guys. I love you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Promise this wasn't planned to follow, Michelle, but good morning. I'm Dorinda Marvin. I've stood at this podium a lot of times in my professional career. And what I always did was I stood like this because I could never make eye contact with my father. Just, I couldn't. And so, this morning, I want to look to you, tell you that I love you, that I'm proud of you, that I've spent less time in your life than the city has. But I have always looked to you and appreciated your wisdom, your guidance, that you shared not only with me to raise me, but this city. There aren't many people who can say they spend over sixty years serving one employer. You have served this city. You have served this city well. And for the last four years, many of you know, there was a time that my dad wasn't sure he wanted to stay on the council. He made it known that he wasn't going to be on the council any longer. And there was some intervention there from someone that placed him here. And I want to say thank you to everyone in the city, especially to the employees, all the department heads, and everyone that has been here that have lifted him up in these last four years, which have been so tough for our family. I love you. Just wanted to be here this morning for this history.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to come forward and not during department head or administrator time and just thank each and every one of the council members. Certainly, starting in 1992, when I started as the auditor, Mr. Byrd was here, and I met him when Paul Esquenado was the clerk and treasurer, and certainly appreciated his friendship and service for all these years. In two different instances, City Council, working as delays on over in Ward 5 was very important to all of us. I wanted to thank Harold. Mr. Gallo, same instance, met him when I came to auditor in 1992, came upstairs. Back in those days, it was to find everything that was wrong in the city and see where we would go from that. At that point in time, council said, "No, that's not the way we're going to do things. We're going to be more positive." And with that, it was a great working relationship for all the time. He's acted as a father figure for me during all this time. I have not had a father for well over thirty-five or forty years. So, it's, it's been a real honor working for you and with you through all of these years. And the same for, for Mr. Poston, for the mayor. Been neighbors for quite a while now, and certainly appreciate those meetings that we have where we sit down and discuss the key issues with the city, how we can resolve them, how we can work together, how we can work together with council as well to make sure that everything that we see here goes smoothly, is transparent, but also a lot of it is taken care of so that people don't have to worry about that business. So, I just want to thank all three of you all for your service and certainly let you know that I appreciate all of you and look forward to working with you as citizens, as I will be a citizen fairly soon as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gene Brown, 808 Third Avenue West. May be hopefully my last official time up here as a citizen, but it's a very important time. And thank you, council, for letting me talk today. Seven and a half or eight years ago now, I got on this council and sat with the three of you leaving. And although we may have not always agreed at times, we always got along, and I know where every one of your hearts were, and it was important. And people don't realize we're going to lose sixty-nine years of institutional knowledge. You add in the other thirty-one, it's almost a hundred years of institutional knowledge that we lose. And people don't realize that that's important as we go through things. Because when you look at it, you know, we're going to start to make decisions. And as we see out through our government and our county, sometimes we don't want to repeat the past. We want to go forward and make it better for our citizens. So, Mr. Byrd, thank you for all that you've done in my eight years on the council, serving with you. And I appreciate what you've done. And I always knew where your heart was for our city. And it always was important to me to call you a friend. You know, at times, there's different opinions we have, but still friends. So, thank you for that. Mr. Mayor, thank you for what you've done, coming in here eight years ago. There's some family history that may not have been fun twenty-one years ago, but, you know.
I enjoyed it.
You enjoyed it. And I'm going to tell the story. I'm going to tell the little story. So, just because I thought, think it's important, and it shows that, that how people need to work together. Twenty-one years ago, when you got on this council, you basically kicked me off the police pension board. When I say that in a funny way, that I was serving on that board for eight years, very proud of my service on that board for our police officers. And it wasn't me. It was a great committee. We hired the right people to raise the money to make our police department the number-one police pension in the state, as we've seen over the years. And I would have served, but I was at the pleasure of the mayor at the time. And my term was up, and I got a nice letter from you saying that, you know, you're going to let other citizens serve. Well, if you remember when I got on the council, what was my first thing I did? I came into your office with that letter and said, "Tear it up, and we're going to work together for our city." And that's important to me. And I didn't, didn't really keep it purposely, but you know how, when you just accidentally find something when it's timing of life. But, but I appreciate you, and I appreciate what you've done for our city for twenty-one years. And I know normally you would save the, the mayor for last, but something I'd save Mr. Gallo for last, because I wouldn't be in this seat where I'm going into now. I wouldn't have been in that seat in Ward 2 without Mr. Gallo. Followed him for many years. What he's done as the Booster Club president, man at the high school football, admired him. And we'd have our battles. You know, there was, there was a battle one time on the council that we were having a broadcaster meeting that night, after our council meeting. And I was a little nervous because I did something that, that I thought was right, stood for my convictions, and it was different than what Mr. Gallo thought. And, and our side won. So, I was a little nervous when you were coming into that meeting. And I remember when you got there that night, you know, I said to you, you know, "Hope you're not mad at me from the standpoint of, you know, I did what I thought was right." And you said, "Hey, that's inside the room. You do what you think is right. Outside, we're friends." So, you will always be a close friend, and, and I appreciate what you do and a mentor. So, thank you for what you've done for our city. And it's honorable to, to be able to call you a friend and follow you through, you know, what we've done here. And look forward to working with all of our council, our citizen. And please, answer your phones if I call you, because I'm going to need some help going through this, starting out. And we're going to be there together to make our city better. So, thank you very much. And thank you for your service, for what you've done for our citizens and the city and keeping it the friendly city. So, thank you.
Gene, thank you. Thank you for stepping up and running and winning.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone. This is not going to be my speech, but I have about fifty cops back there that I need to see get back to work. So, I wanted to say a few things so that I could get them out of here. Just very briefly, Mr. Byrd, I'm going to miss you. One of the first meetings you and I had together, you said to me point-blank, "I've looked at your resume. I've talked to some people who you used to work with. You got this, chief. You'll only hear from me when there's a problem." And I appreciate that. I appreciate the confidence you had in me. And you always kind of held true to that. You'd get with me when there was problems, and you'd say, "I know you know how to take care of it." And that means a lot, coming from a council member. So, thank you. Mr. Gal, I never thought I'd stand at the dais and be okay with somebody calling me darling. But the first time you did it at the first meeting, I said, "You know what? I'm going to like this guy." Because I knew it was genuine. And it wasn't anything other than saying, "Hey, from a fellow public safety person, I'm here for you." And so, thank you for a lifetime of public service. All of us in this room in the back, we understand that. We understand the calling. We understand your commitment. You kind of switched over to the other side here, but it's a different kind of public service. And we appreciate everything that you've done for us, the police department, and really for this community. I appreciate that.
Thank you, darling.
Nobody else is allowed to do that, by the way. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to keep my comments till later. And I'm really just going to make it simple. Most of the folks in this room, you're the only mayor they've ever worked for. A lot of us, not a lot of us, a lot of them back there, they've been in policing less than twenty-one years. And I know we're sunsetting the, the term police commissioner, but I will tell you, that term has meant a lot to me, and it's meant a lot to my folks. What, what it told us was that beyond being mayor, there was a small part of you that really understood what we did and why we did it, what we're willing to risk every day for our community. See, my, my folks always try to get me all choked up, and that's why I'm probably going to just stop right there. I, for one, will miss you. I have worked for about three mayors very closely. And I always rate y'all, I'm sorry I do, number one. My, I got a call last week from the other two mayors, and I actually told them they'd fallen in the ranks. And they were a little upset about that, but they said, "Well-deserving." And I think the folks behind me would agree. And so, on behalf of the Bradenton Police Department, we all want to stand up, my officers, and give you a standing ovation for a job well done. Thank you all. Thank you, sir.
That said, anybody else have any comments? Then we're good. Mr. Callahan, move forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We request approval of consent agenda items A through O.
Who moved? They have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote. Ward 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5? Consent agenda is approved. Votes 5 to 0. Mr. Callahan?
Yes. Under Business Advertisings Petitions Hearings and Communications, we have something under the Planning and Community Development Department. It's ordinance 3054. It's the second reading of public hearing of ordinance 3054. An ordinance, the city of Braden, Florida, admitting policy 1.2.1 of the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan, increasing the maximum floor area ratio in the urban village, future land use category for properties with frontage along an arterial, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This is a public hearing today, and we're requesting action on this item today. Marshall?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Marshall McCrory, Planning and Zoning Manager with Planning and Community Development Department. Sorry to bring you business. You had a nice beginning of this meeting, but I got a little business I'm going to bring you this morning. This is second reading and public hearing, as Mr. Callahan mentioned, for a comprehensive plan text amendment. Some of you may remember back in January, we considered this item, which affects the urban village future land use classification. That is a mixed-use zoning category that the city would like to better incentivize for true mixed-use development. It currently has a floor area ratio, which is the intensity limiting factor of .7. And staff finds that that's a more suburban type of standard than would encourage a, a mixed-use type of development. So, in evaluating how we could better incentivize mixed-use development under the urban village, we looked at increasing that floor area ratio to allow for an up to 2.0 floor area ratio for properties that are along an arterial. So, those are, those are properties situated to better accommodate a larger intensity commercial type of development. Got a brief presentation I'll bring you through. On this map, we see in the pink all the urban village designated properties within the city. You see it dominates a large swath of the city, particularly the Village of the Arts area, and the Ninth Street and Fourteenth Street corridors. And the intensity factor for non-residential development of .7 is appropriate for the urban village in a lot of these areas. So, that's why we singled out the arterial locations. And you see those in crosshatching here. They're really limited to very finite corridors. East Manatee Avenue area, you see some. West Manatee Avenue and along the Fourteenth Street corridor, and a couple of instances on US-1, and out at Twenty-seventh Street East, believe it or not, at a little urban village piece down here at the villages of Glen Creek. Future land categories define development rights. They're basically the entitlements on a given piece of property. An urban village allows both residential and non-residential. Those limiting factors are that density of 25 units per acre or floor area ratio. That .7 means for a 10,000-square-foot piece of property, you can only develop 7,000 square feet of retail space or commercial space. So, the proposal to go to 2.0 would allow potentially two floors of non-residential development accompanied by the residential as well. Staff obviously recommends approval on this. Staff brought it before the council back in January. Planning Commission considered it at their December 2019 meeting and recommended approval as well. The, this only affects the entitlements associated with the comprehensive plan designation. It doesn't change any of the zoning designations, doesn't change any of the zoning requirements for development under urban village. It just better incentivizes mixed-use development along these particular corridors. This was transmitted to the state in accordance with the state statute. After the transmittal hearing in January, we did receive no comment back from the state nor any reviewing agencies. So, staff has brought it back forward to you for the final stage, which is the adoption. And we are recommending approval here.
Any questions? Marshall? Patrick?
Yeah, thank you. Marshall, if you go back to that map?
Yes.
The, I'm fine with this. And I'm looking at the, it looks like the, inside the pink, you got your crosshatch zone there, that the, is the UV, that that's a change area? Is that right? Could you blow up? Or, or, I'm just curious, what happened when we did this? The area over there on West Manatee Avenue, that, what changed, that area used to be in there, especially on, on, on kind of both sides of the street I'm looking at, that I know that it was professional along Manatee Avenue, and then along the alleyway used to be purely residential. And when, this is one of those deals where when we went and went through with Tim Pope, what we were doing and what got changed, kind of, I, I didn't catch it at the time. So, I'm just checking the areas that are going to be affected on that. In, in that crosshatch zone is, it's certainly not going to be the entire pink. It's just a, it's just a crosshatching. So, there's, there's only a few of them that actually go over to Sixth.
Absolutely. And, and many of these properties are already developed. And redevelopment might potentially take advantage of the increase. But again, they have to develop with all the other requirements associated with development, so parking, stormwater, et cetera. So, the idea is that this will make it more lucrative for folks who want to do true mixed use. But the staff report goes into the overall acreage associated with these crosshatched areas and the amount of square footage it could result in.
And, and I see that they're, they're the ones that are already pretty much higher, higher, higher use. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're protect, this time, I wanted to make sure it was protected. I, I probably wasn't watching it close enough the last time. It should have stayed at the alleyway, but it didn't. But that is a residential on, on the Sixth Avenue side.
Right. And again, these are specifically picked because they are on roads that have capacity for commercial traffic. And they're, they're intended for commercial development.
That's slipping on the same thing going over into Manatee, or Ward 2, the same thing that's, that's, you know, the difference between what's on Manatee and what's behind it is night and day.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Marshall?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. To open the public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this ordinance? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Close of public hearing. Chair will adjourn to motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 3054. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote. Ward 2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
Ordinance 3054 is approved. The vote is 5 to 0. Mr. Callahan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next two items are quasi-judicial hearings, and therefore we will swear in anyone who is wishing to speak during those items. So, anyone who's wishing to speak during the next two items, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm factual statements and factual representations you are about to present to this council, be truthful and accurate? Thank you. The next item is case number SU 20.0478, Ward 5, neighborhood 7.04. This is a public hearing. Request of Anthony Sinelli with LW Supply Agent for RNR, a Sarasota Inc. owner, for a special use permit to expand an existing building materials establishment in the urban commercial corridor zoning district. The property is located at 521 26th Street East, Braden, Florida, 34208, parcel ID number 13291.1000/9. This is a public hearing, and we are expecting action on this item today. Thank you.
Good morning again. Marshall McCrory, Planning and Community Development Department. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. This is a special use consideration item. As you know, special uses come before you because they're permissible, but they may have adverse impacts. And the idea is to make sure that they're reviewed, to make sure they don't bring any adverse impacts to surrounding uses. This does affect an existing business here in the city, LNW Building Supply, which is located at 2510 Manatee Avenue West, or East, excuse me, East. And they have bought an adjoining parcel and have expansion plans for that parcel. LNW's existing holding highlighted there in red, and then the yellow is the subject parcel, 521 26th Street East. And as noted, UCC is the zoning, and UCC is also the underlying future land use. UCC is the mixed-use zoning district as well. It does allow residential at a very light type of density and moderate intensity of commercial development. And the purpose of the expansion area is to provide space for loading and unloading of trucks and storage of materials. You all may remember 2018, I believe, or 19, some, a number of comp plan changes were made addressing open storage. Open storage is affected in the UCC, future land use category, and it's not allowed. So, any storage has to be covered. And the applicant is aware of that and has proposed carport canopy-type structures to accommodate the stored materials. And here's a sketch plan of the expansion area, three buildings serving as, like I said, basically carports for storage of materials, some expanded area for trucks to navigate and circulate. The 10-foot buffer requirement is able to be met. However, we're finding the buffer is not necessary on the west side where it abuts their existing facility, nor on the north side where actually... nor on the north side where actually space is reserved for an adjoining business. There is a fence surrounding the property, and it will be meshed to block the view. And we will install landscape materials within portions of the buffer. As you know, we've got a host of criteria by which to evaluate, provided in the Land Use Regulation, Section 3.3. Those are all provided in the staff report that's a part of the packet today. And staff does provide you an analysis of each of those items. I won't go through each of those this morning. But I will get to staff's recommendation, which is for approval of the expansion with no stipulations. And this was considered by the Planning Commission last month at their regular November 18 meeting, and their recommendation was for approval as well. With that, I'll answer any questions or try to, and possibly we have a public hearing as well.
Any questions of Marshall? Patrick?
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at the aerial view here, and it doesn't seem to be any neighbors, so we haven't heard any, heard from anyone.
We did hear from an adjoining property owner who got the notice and was calling to find out what was going on, and we did hear from the owner. There are two duplex buildings just north of this area. Can, I believe you can see on this aerial here, two duplex structures. And the owner of those just expressed concern for their safety and wanted to make sure there were no adverse impacts to affect those residents.
Any other questions of Marshall? Marshall, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request, please come forward. Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this request? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Close of public hearing. Chair will adjourn to motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make motion to approve SU 200478.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve case number SU 20.0478. Any discussion? Hearing done. Let's vote. Ward Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Case number SU 20.0478 is approved. The vote's five to zero. Callahan?
Yes, this is a second quasi-judicial hearing. This is case number SU 20.4092, Ward One, Neighborhood 4.06. Public hearing. Request of Rachel Layton of ZNS Engineering, L.C., agent for First Manatee Bank, owner of a special use permit to operate a restaurant with over 20 seats in the SCC suburban, suburban, commercial corridor zoning district. The property is located at 5100 Cortez Road West, Braden, Florida, 34210. Parcel ID number 5111.0035/9. This is a public hearing. Requesting action on this item today.
Marshall McCrory again. This is our last item this morning. And the same as the other special use to consider for the criteria we just saw. This one is in an SCC zoning district. This is 5100 Cortez Road West. Suburban commercial corridor is a strictly commercial zoning district. Property is located here at the corner of 51st Street West and Cortez Road. And SCC, and SCC dominates city holdings along this corridor. We see some county across the street. And future land use, again, SCC dominating. And this is a shot of the existing site as it is today. There's a vacant bank building on the property. The proposal is to demo the site as it currently sits and to rebuild it with the restaurant and totally change the circulation of the site as well. Notice this site currently has one, two, three, four points of access. Two are limited, but their proposed site plan dramatically changes that and improves it to reduce it down to only two points of access. It eliminates the access points that are too close to an intersection and the one that's over here where there's stacking that occurs on 51st Street. So it's a far better design for the site as well. Also, there's shared access being introduced here for the adjoining business that currently relies another shared access further to the west. There are those criteria by which staff has evaluated and provided in your packet in the staff report. Our assessment does find that the site's well-suited to support the proposed use in established commercial corridor. This is an appropriate use in this location. Access is improved by the proposal. The site design is generally compliant with municipal city standards and subject to review under our SIP process. The proposed use is consistent with surrounding development pattern and provides a use which supports existing development. And we find that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land designation of suburban commercial corridor and furthers its goals. So staff's recommendation is approval. Planning Commission, last month, November 18, recommended approval as well with no stipulations. Thank you.
Any questions of Marshall? Any question? Marshall, thank you. This is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request, please come forward.
Good morning, council. My name is Rachel Layton, and I have been sworn I'm a certified planner with ZNS Engineering. I'm happy to give a full presentation this morning or just answer questions at the pleasure of the board.
First question, this is a Wendy's?
This is a Wendy's, yes, sir. So, full presentation?
Would anyone like a full presentation?
Was there anything that we did not, I'm sorry, I know I sound like a muppet with this thing. Was there anything that you would like to have seen covered that our staff did not cover?
I think Marshall did an excellent job covering everything. Really, the highlight of this is that we are changing the access points. And I'll quickly just go through the slides. If I can remember how to do the slideshow. And I do have here with me today Matt Campo with Campo Engineering and David Grabowski with Grabowski Howland Graveling. So this is a list of the team members that have been assisting with the application, and it will be used by Wendy's. So you see here the intersection where the site will be, and this is heavily developed corridor along Cortez Road. And we do have a Boston Market right across the street from us and a Checkers, two doors down. And I don't know if Marshall had submitted into the record the recorded easements and restrictions agreement, so I can pass those out real quick. You did? Okay, never mind. Sorry, mask on, mask off. So he went through the future land use map. We do have residential to the north of us, but they are currently adjacent to all of that commercial development. And we do have a church across the street from us. We have bus stop locations that are nearby to us, which I think is fantastic for this use for the future employees. We have the suburban commercial corridor along the stretch here, too, which really encourages those automobile-oriented uses. And then we have a blow up of the site plan. So one of the things that, you know, I come to a lot of city council meetings, and I'm very privileged to be able to present to you guys quite often and then listen to what you have in front of you quite often. So when Matt Campo put together this site plan and I saw the access and circulation changes for me as a planner and someone who frequents fast food for my children quite a bit, I was pleased to see the access with the right end off of Cortez Road coming in and then being able to circulate and stack several cars on site through the drive-through, especially listening to some of the other hearings. And then to have a bypass lane to come through here as well, I was really pleased with the design. The parking does meet all of the requirements of the code. The building there now is just over 6,500 square feet, and the new building will be under 3,000 square feet. So that's a substantial change in the footprint. The drive-through will be set back 80 feet from the residence to the north. The dumpster will be in the northeast corner here, so that it will be facing away from the residence. Because the home that's to the northeast, to the north there faces actually towards the intersection. So it won't be facing that dumpster. So we'll also have signage in there and lighting that will meet code. We have 20 outdoor seats, and we have 42 seats indoors. Let's see, what else do I want to share? We'll utilize existing city water and sewer connections. And again, we're reconfiguring the access. We're going to have the 10-foot required landscape buffers all around. We're going to have shared access, which will improve this connection here. And we have, I believe we've had FDOT pre-application meetings already, and they're in favor of the shared access with the adjacent property owner to the west. And we are compatible with the surrounding commercial uses along Cortez Road. And this area, again, is a very developed area. We're excited for the redevelopment potential with this proposed application. And it is, the drive-through itself is a permitted use. So what, the special use itself is a requirement because of the number of seats for the restaurant. It's one of the quirks of the land use regulations. So the application itself is consistent with the land use regulations under the special use criteria that Marshall outlined earlier and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And does facilitate the reduction of infrastructure costs and is a request for change which further promotes the intent of the policy by reducing infrastructure costs in an area of the city already served by city facilities and services. And we respectfully request the planning, sorry, the city council approved their special use permit today. We will have some areas for drainage as well. We've been working on the engineering plans already, but I felt like that was, it's a little too early to start sharing those drawings. So if you have any questions, our team is happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions of Rachel? Ms. Callahan?
I have more of a request than a question.
Sure.
Sometimes our constituents ask us to accomplish things that we cannot accomplish, and we look for other people for help. So I would like to relay a message out of Ward One that between 59th Street and 75th Street, there's a great desire for a Chick-fil-A. If, if in fact, if, and I can give you some leads on property that is available.
Okay.
If you have anybody interested, please send them that direction.
Okay. We will talk offline later for those sites. But I think my developer back there maybe have, may have a connection.
Well, it is a, it is something that I hear very, very often. It's not, you know, just one or two people, but there is a great desire to have that out there.
I know I would like one in north side of the river. Thank you.
I can con, I can concur with what Councilman Gallo has said. I also think that a Chick-fil-A is a license to print money, and I think it would do great guns out there. So I know that there's a ton of people that would respectfully request people listen to that.
Rachel, not to get off the subject here, but there is a permit request for a Chick-fil-A sitting on the corporate offices at Chick-fil-A.
Okay.
It's been there now for three months.
You're talking about the one it was going to be and the supposedly where Target was going to be built, because that's all folded up, I understand.
That was not a, Chick-fil-A was not aware that that was them.
Okay.
But, sir, I also know that today at Crowder Brothers, there is a Chick-fil-A food truck, just in case you want to know.
I didn't know they had food trucks. That's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, back on the original.
Any other questions for my special?
Original point, any other questions of?
Yeah.
Rachel. Patrick?
Yeah, I'm not going to continue in the commercial for Chick-fil-A, so. Does the, I was looking, the first thing that caught my eye, and I think you've already addressed it, was with your traffic flow, it looks like you're recommending for people to come in on 51st and go around, queuing up. Let's see, what page is this? C1. But then, it does look like you're having, you are allowing access off of Cortez, which I think most people are going to want to do. I kind of hate sticking recommended traffic flow on a side street to go around.
No, we have no curb cut on 51st Street when we redevelop the site.
Right, right, no, I know. I'm just, so I'm just checking to make sure. You are, you're definitely allowing people to come in on Cortez right there.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. So what was the purpose of this?
Oh, so that we could show that the fire truck could maneuver the site.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. The wording is so small, I can't read it.
It's the print size. I can't read it anymore either.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of Rachel? Rachel, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all of the opportunities to come before you. I will certainly miss presenting in front of Councilman Gallo and Councilman Burden and you, Mayor Poston.
Thank you. Let's open the public hearing. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Close of public hearing. Chair will adjourn to motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve case number SU 20.4092. Any discussion? Hearing done, let's vote. Ward Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Case number SU 20.4092 is approved. The vote is five to zero. Callahan?
Yes, we have no new business by department head, city attorney, or city council. We do have some unfinished business, which is under my, under city administrator. It's Resolution 20-78. And that is a resolution, City of Braden, Florida, implementing employment agreement for those certain individuals designated as senior management positions and providing an effective date. As you recall, we had presented this a couple of months ago. We worked through some kinks. The main intent of this is to make sure, make sure that when new employees come in that are under the direct supervision of council or me, that there is a recognition of exactly what their benefits and things that they will receive when they're employed here. And it doesn't provide for any long-term contract. It's not, it's none of those things. It is just an agreement that outlines exactly what will happen to you since you are at will employees and takes care of those situations and also protects the city when it comes time for them to leave as to understanding exactly what their responsibilities are in leaving the city. We've worked through some, some kinks that were probably not as clear with Mr. Sanders as, because we wanted to make sure we excluded the police chief. You certainly are welcome to do that in the future or something that would particularly describe that. Or with the CRA director under the CRA board, but those are, those are particularly not in this agreement. So we respectfully request your approval and think this is a long time coming and moving forward with those departments that work directly for you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 2078.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Just roll.
Yeah, but just one question. Carl, I think we brought this up before and just wanted to make sure that we, so all the corrections that were made definitely took all the, you know, any questions I had out of it. And the one thing I, I know that there's going to be a discussion as we move forward on to whether to continue having a city administrator, which I'm not proposing for or against at all. I look forward to that discussion. We keep having that term in there, so what would we do if that, if the future council?
If you didn't have that position. What it usually says in there is administrator slash or council.
Okay.
So it reflects that it is council that ultimately has the call.
Right.
And in those instances where it may not be its administrator or council.
Okay, so if, if it were to go, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not proposing that at all. Would we just leave that intact with administrator even though there wouldn't be one?
There are ways you could do it. You leave it either intact or just request a new resolution that took that out.
All right.
It would still be fine.
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. No more discussion. Let's vote. Ward Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Resolution 2078 is approved.
Thank you.
Vote is five to zero. Anything else, Ms. Callahan?
No, sir.
We have a department head report. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if I might take a few minutes to?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can we back it up? Just because I know, I forgot what's really probably going to be going on today, just some discussion. Can we, Jim and I have something to present real fast that probably is more appropriate under our business before we get into council reports and department head reports, if we could? Is that fine?
That's fine.
Okay. We had sent out some information on a particular property request that the City of Bradenton was looking to try to acquire. You're aware that for years, we've looked at trying to change the intersection at 13th Avenue and Ninth Street to provide some turning mechanisms, and it's become more important because, as you see in the, in the weekly reports from Public Works, that the, the exact end of this, on the other end, at First and 13th, is being redone just starting after the first of the year to approve, improve the, the turning mechanisms and the flow of traffic around Rogers. the, the turning mechanisms and the flow of traffic around Rogers, particularly around Rogers Elementary. We, this is certainly in the MPO queue now, but we don't want to have to wait too long to be able to acquire this property to make it happen. We've made several runs at the property, a bit unsuccessful. At this point, I think we can get it under contract with our broker. And what happens with this, Jim has shown you the potential layout. What I'm concerned with is if we don't buy it now, and it goes to the MPO at some point in time in the future, and we have to acquire it, there would have been business development on this site, in which case we would be buying a business as well as an empty piece of property. So we're requesting that you authorize us to acquire this. The price is $170,000. I've done the comps to the other properties in the area. It is a bit high, there's no doubt. It is a bit higher than, than what has been paid over on 17th for properties on a per square foot basis. But I think it could only go higher if we, development actually gets on there. So I think it's, it's a great opportunity for us to get this and, and then let Jim try to proceed with the program on the, on the lane widening at 13th, which will certainly improve our flow at that intersection.
Yeah, the council's obviously emailed on?
They've received a packet that shows this.
It certainly is necessary.
I'm sorry?
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll make that motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve.
And it is in our budget. It is part of the line item that we had set aside for road impact fee property acquisitions. There's others over on the other side of East that's in there as well. So it is, it is in the budget currently.
All right, we have a motion and seconds. Are any discussion?
Yeah, it, I'm definitely, I see the value of doing this, and certainly we talked about it. It's, I hate to spend that kind of money on such a small piece of property, but it's certainly, it's certainly needed. So, but, you know, I wouldn't want anyone out there to think that we're going to be running around buying overpriced pieces of property just because we'd like to get a little more traffic flow through there. But certainly the need is there because it's not just, it's not just the schools and it's public work vehicles coming in and out of there. And I could tell you, as someone that cuts through the village to get in and out of there, you know, 9th is a, either going right or left, it doesn't really matter, you know. Crossing 9th is very difficult because of the way it's, you know, because of the traffic flow and that, that turn lane in the middle. It's a tough, it's a tough one.
Ms. Gallo?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, want to say, I look at the purchase of that land a little bit different, Patrick, and maybe, maybe it'll help you feel better. I, I do not look at the price as what we are doing and why we are paying that much money. What I look at it is, we are spending that money to resolve a very serious problem. And whatever it costs goes towards resolving the problem and safety for this community, so.
Agreed.
And I know with, with the past, what's happened in the county and the money they've spent and people have made hullabaloo out of nothing, that with good conscience, I think the city council needs to do it.
Yeah, just an example of price. It's not way out of line, it's just a little higher. The two recent purchases over on 17th Avenue and 9th Street was approximately 1924 square foot and approximately 2184 square foot, and this is 2216. So, and that's easily offset by the small nature, much smaller nature of this piece, so the price per square foot goes up. So it's, it's more expensive, it's not, it's, I would have hoped to have been able to do it 130 or 140, but we're at 170.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Vote's five to zero.
Yes, and I have one other item I don't want to?
Good work on that, Carl and Jim. Nice work.
One other item I'd like to bring up from Ms. Beauchamp. As, as you guys have previously approved under the COVID restrictions, we have allowed our employees under the Blue Cross Blue Shield to not have costs associated with testing the things that are necessary going forward, any, any COVID-related items. The City of Bradenton is paying for by our employees, if not, especially as we get ready to go into the round of vaccinations effective 1-1 of 21. Blue Cross Blue Shields wants us to, if we're, want to continue that program, we need to sign the same waivers we have signed previously while we've been under these emergency conditions. We're requesting that city council waive those, those costs to the employees for COVID-related items going forward. There will be a defined time, but what happens is, I think it's good for three or six months, and we have to do it again. So that's, but, starting 1-1 of 21, we want to be able to do that same program for the employees.
You need a motion, David? Callahan?
Yes, I do.
I'll move.
Sir?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question?
Ms. Gallo?
Does this apply to retirees that stay within the program of Blue Cross as a secondary?
I am not sure. I think it does, but I think it covers our covered people. Our covered folks. Meaning, if you're a retiree, I think you are a covered individual.
Then I'm prepared to vote, Mr. Mayor.
I am too soon as well.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion is approved. Five to zero.
That's all I have, and I, I hope we get those out of the way before you guys have, say what you want to say.
Perfect. Council report. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't take up too much time, maybe 30 minutes, but I would just like to, to thank the City of Bradenton and the, and the people who live in the city for permitting me to stay here and serve for 60 years. When I go back and think a little bit, it's kind of scary. I'm a graduate of Mantey High School, and the only reason why I think I graduated was because they wanted to get rid of me, not because I made good grades. And I had no idea what I wanted to do whatsoever in my life, other than at that time I wanted to be a, a radio and TV technician repairing televisions. That's, I took three hours a day of electronics in high school just to stay away from the real important classes. I worked at it for a while, but one night I was driving down Manatee Avenue, and there was a two-story house on fire on 31st Street and Mantey Avenue. And it happened to be the house of a, a girl who I went with for about two and a half, three years in school. And I stopped my car. They were widening Mantey Avenue and had big ditches. I had to jump over the ditch, ran to the house, and I ran up to a fireman. And I said, "Is everybody out of the house?" He says, "Yeah, we think so." Well, I said, "Did you get the dog?" And he looked at me like I was crazy. So I ran in the house, and I knew the dog's name was Rex. And I ran upstairs, and he was cowered underneath the bed. And I got the dog out. But before I got out, I looked out the window from the second story, and I could see the fireman putting a ladder up to get into the second story, and they saw me and was, started screaming. So I ran outside and had the dog, and they chewed me out. Long story short, about 30 days later, I was applying for a job at the fire department, and the captain remembered me. I had no idea why I wanted to be a fireman. I just saw him working that night, and I said, "That's kind of a cool job." And that's when I started serving the people of this community. And I didn't realize at that time, that's what this job is all about, is helping people that are in need. And I was kind of a rowdy person. But about two years later, there was this beautiful girl walking from the police department to Touchton Drugstore for lunch. She was a police dispatcher for the Bradenton Police Department. And I made it my business to go out and talk to her. And this was in April. We dated three times. I asked her to marry me. We got married in August, and until the day she went home to be with the Lord. She was my wife. And my mission in life changed on that, on that time. I wanted to continue to help people. And I put 31 and a half years in with the fire department, and I thought my, my serving this community was over. I was offered a job with a fire equipment company, which I took, which was paying $45,000 a year, which was a lot of money because I was making, only making $54,000 when I was Fire Chief Chuck. And I know that's changed quite a bit. But I couldn't get it out of my system, what I wanted to do in serving people. And so I ran for office within a month and got fortunate to get elected. This job at that time paid $18,000 a year, and I gave up a job of $45,000 a year to take this job. So people who say you come to work for the government, they don't really understand. But I've been blessed. I've worked with, with great council people. I've worked four and under five different mayors of this city. I've worked with Brother Harold twice on this city council. And I've never once said that I did this. What I've always said is, I was part of the team who got something done in the city. When I look back now, as I'm leaving, I look at the changes in this city. And if you were around here in the 50s and the 60s, it would blow your mind to see how far this city has come. We are a beautiful city, and it's a great place to live. And I, all I can say is thank God that I was part of, of the people who made the right decisions. And I thank you so much for letting me serve. I thank this city council for letting me work with you for the last four years. I'm going to miss you guys. I'm sure that I have another mission. I don't know what it's going to be yet, but until the Lord takes me home, hopefully I'll be able to stay busy and do something. The last thing that I want to say is how blessed I am that, that my wife and I had two beautiful daughters, one of them you saw this morning. But I have two grandsons that I am so proud of. My oldest one, who graduated from Southern Illinois University, is a caseworker at Centerstone. He has a heart for serving people. My youngest grandson, who will be graduating from Mantey High School this year, wants to be a firefighter. So the serving in the Gallo family will continue, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby, talk that.
Well, I have now officially cried in two different council meetings the entire time I've been here. Yeah, thanks so much for letting me go after Mr. Gallo, because that's not going to be hard. When I was thinking about the meeting today, all of us up here strive to be leaders, but we do it in our own way. So I was looking up quotes on leadership, and so I'm going to go alphabetically. Mr. Byrd, the quote that resonated with me when I read it, that made me think of you, is by Rosalynn Carter. "A leader takes people where they want to go. A great leader takes people where they don't necessarily want to go but ought to be." And I believe that that's what you've done and worked very hard to do so. It's easy to say yes, it's hard to say no. But good leaders, great leaders know when to say yes and when to say no.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallo, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not necessarily set out to be a leader but becomes one by the equality of his actions and the integrity of his intent." And that's from General Douglas MacArthur.
Thank you.
And I know that there was many times up here, that there were times that you voted your convictions, but you stood alone. But you still did it. And that is a fine example.
Thank you.
I will get through this. And Mayor Poston, "The best executive is the one who has the sense, or has the sense enough to pick good men," and I'm going to add women to that, "to do what needs to be done, and the self-restraint to keep from meddling with them to do it." And that is a quote from one of my favorite presidents, Theodore Roosevelt. I believe every department head told me that any time they came to you with a concern, a question, a problem, you sat with them, you reasoned with them, you made suggestions, but you told them they needed to decide and they needed to handle it. And every one of those men and women said to me how much they appreciated your faith in them. And by putting your faith in them, you are putting your faith in our city. You have been a very good mayor, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I think I'm done.
Ms. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, quite often I've found that when you, when, when we're in government and we do things right, everyone's kind of like, "Well, yeah, sure, that's what you're supposed to do." But when we do things wrong, it's like, "Oh, shame on you." So I don't think, I don't think enough credit's been given to us for what, for, for the times that we, we get along, you know, it's, there's much, much, there's been attention to the times where there's, you know, disagreement. But we've really, serving with you gentlemen, I'm really proud of the things that we've accomplished over the, over the course of the years. And, and it took agreement and, and working together and thinking things through, you know. I, I think that what we've accomplished is nothing short of a renaissance. You know, that this, I remember when I moved here in the late 80s, this town was described to me as like a blue collar retirement community close to Sarasota, and we're now a destination. And that, that didn't happen by accident. That was planning. That was good planning. You know, everyone's aware of the big, the big items that we've done, but I just want to throw a few small ones out there that we've accomplished, that people probably don't, you know. I remember my first six months in office, the Mantey players were going to move to Palmetto. It was a very public move on their part that they, and it was the city that talked them into, you know, sticking over here on this side and helping that. And they would, they would never would have gotten that, that building off the ground without the city's involvement. The land, the land lease that's held there. You know, we're all proud of the Riverwalk Park and everything, but Normal Lloyd is a major accomplishment to get, to get a, an athletic field of that size in, you know, in Ward Five where it belongs, you know. But that was not, that was not a small deal. You know, repairing the infrastructure of our city, we hear everyone running around all over the United States, including the federal government, it's like, "Oh, infrastructure, infrastructure." We've actually done it. We have a program where we're replacing, you know, old roadways and pipes and everything like that, where people are still trying to, talking about it. It's, it's a talking point. It's like, it's a doing for us that, and there's so many more things. I could go on, on and on forever. But, but we've, you know, it's just, it's just a great, it's been great working with you guys because I think we should all be proud, you should be proud, of what we've accomplished. It's, it's no small feat. This is a, this is a wonderful place to live, and, and that didn't just happen. And lastly, I think the one thing that we all agree on is that, you know, of a, of a city of 56,000 a city of fifty-six thousand people, we have less than 600 people taking care of those people, that are employees. And, and that's, that's a minute number. And, and we ask a lot out of them, but they know, I think they know, that, that we, we value them, and we do what we can for them. And that's probably the biggest thing we do of all, is that when we treat, when we treat our employees with, with, with respect, with love and respect, that, you know, they go out and do the right thing, and I think that that's, that's probably our best accomplishment. So anyway, congratulations, gentlemen. You've done a good job, you know, hold your head high and leave an honor, I'll be following you in a couple of years. So, you know, thank you for your service.
Sanders?
Yes, congratulations to the three of you, to councilman, the mayor. You've got some pretty big shoes that has to be filled, and I'm sure that it's gonna take a long time for somebody to step to the plate to do that. I don't have a long history here, but I do appreciate your service, appreciate working with you, so stay in touch. The only history I bring here is only being on the council two years, is that when I bought a home here in 2011, 10 years ago, the first mayor, or not the first mayor, it's one of, first twenty-year mayor, Mr. Evers, lived next door to me. Or at least he owned the house at that time, he did, he'd moved. And I found out through Mr. Poston that, at a ballgame, that there was an apartment up above it, and he's telling me, he says, when I was a young man, I lived in that apartment. I said, really? And I said, so I had a mayor of twenty, twenty years that bought it, to be mayor of next 20 years that lived there. I said, that, that, and now the councilman's there, I said, I'm kinda proud of being in that neighborhood. And Mr. Brown, it's sorry, it's not for sale, so you'll have to just visit it, and I'm sure to be in the historical archives of our city. But again, I appreciate your services. You know, being in politics is a tough, tough sport. And take no offense to anything that might have been said, because it's, it's all, it's all in the book product, and our city has been very successful, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Ms. Byrd?
Last, as usual, it's, it's kinda tough. I told my wife coming here, I say, well, it's the last one, last time I'll be able to speak from the dais, and she said, ooh, you know, it's not gonna be sad, I'm not gonna tear up. And Ms. Gallo, you started it, and you came second, and, but I, I promised, I said, well, it's a joyful time. I remember, you know, and thank you all for, you know, the opportunity. Give me a moment. From East Bradenton to, at age of 29, come and be elected as a city councilman here in the city of Bradenton. It was a big time, big moment. And all the years from, you were the fire chief when I came on, that's how long it's been. The different changes throughout the city, you know, the experiences furthering my education, different things. And we always say, and I like the comment, you always say, legislative branch, you don't do anything by yourself. It took, it took all of you. And whether we're looking at the improvements downtown, Riverwalk, Ward Five, Ward One, Two, Three, Four, we've done some great things, and I'm happy to be a part of it. I've served under both mayors, Mayor Evers as well as you, Mayor Poston, and I think it's something that I will always remember. Mr. Gallo, fire chief, and then as, as councilman, you know, that's gonna be in my memory. And those that, that I have the opportunity to talk to about Bradenton, government, I will make sure that, you know, those things and some of the experiences I've had being on this council, we're gonna go, go forward, and it will be remembered. Mr. Callahan, yeah, I remember, 1992. And I, I remember being old city hall. I had what I thought was the smallest office. I call it the basement over there. And so we have some, some great memories. And last but not least, I, I always feel that even though times are tough right now, and you're gonna have the work cut out for you, I just think that sometimes you look at things and you wanna leave things in better shape than when you came on. When I look at the legislative branch and the new executive branch, I have the full confidence that the city will be moving in the right direction. So your work is cut out for you, and to you, Mayor Lick Brown, super nice guy. They always, they tell me, hey, you know, you're a nice guy, you're not your typical politician, and, but, you know, I think a lot of times it helps to be just a, just a nice guy, listening to the people, and I, I see that in you. And we look forward to your leadership. Right now, I don't know what the good Lord is gonna, what direction he's going to push me in, and, but whatever it is, it's gonna be serving the people. I came on many years ago with that attitude. I, you know, I wanted to, to do something and to be that, that public servant, and we've done that. And, you know, we, we pray and hope that we will do that in the future, and anything I can do, if we're in the area, and right now, we're, we're looking to still be here. I got a, a mother and a wife that lives at the, at the house, and they, they don't wanna go anywhere. They don't wanna go anywhere. So most likely, but anything I can do, we're still here, you know. And like I say, born and raised, you know, this is, this is my, my city, I consider that. And anything I can do, it may not be from elected position, but it's all about community service, and we will continue to go in that direction. Once again, thanks, and you guys started it over there. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna get emotional, y'all started it. But thanks again, and it's been great, it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is gonna be shorter than you think it's gonna be, so that's good. This is a second retirement for me. I was executive editor of the Bradenton Herald for 25 years, and I retired at age 55. When you retire at 55, you discover you have nobody to play with. So people came to me and talked to me about their, hey, there's an opportunity here that we'd like to, we feel we're sort of underrepresented in the mayor's office, we can do a better job. One thing led to another, and then I've ended up in this job for 21 years. Been very, I've been successful as mayor, because I've been able to hire very, very good people, and they make me look good, that's what, what the thing is. And managing people is what makes you successful, helping people think through what their jobs are, to make sure they know what the job, our job is, and then they just go and do that. So that's, that's how we've, we've worked in the city since I've been mayor, and I've had a great time doing that. Couldn't have been successful as mayor, or as, a lot of community work that I do without my wife Mickey, who is sitting in the audience, the love of my life, and the foreman of my ranch, so we, we work together very well. If you think I don't find good people and work with them, Hillary Byerline, my administrative assistant, is sitting in the audience, and we've only worked together since 1987. So she was with me at the Herald. I called her and said, do you have any interest in coming to the mayor's office? She said, what the hell took you so long? We've worked together and had, had a wonderful time and good support. I'm gonna miss a lot of the folks, working day to day with them, particularly our first responders, chief, chief and chief. Jim McClellan is a real talent that we were lucky, lucky to have here, and so we've got good department heads, we have good people who work in this, in this city, who care about this city just as much as anybody sitting up here does, so. It's been a real pleasure and a great opportunity. I wanna thank everybody who helped me. I wanna thank all those people who didn't help me so much, because that just made me more serious about getting this job done. I really never liked being mayor. There's too much celebrity in it. But I sure have enjoyed doing the mayor's work, and that was, that's what gave me pleasure is in sitting up here. So that's the whole story. Looking forward to retirement. I think, a little stressed yesterday, looking forward to, looking to this meeting, but I took my blood pressure this morning, as I do every morning, and it was 117 over 66. So I'm feeling pretty good right this morning. So that's what we're gonna do, anyway. Thank you all again, it's, it's been a real pleasure. So department head reports, Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir. For filling in for Sharon today, you have her clerk's report update, please take a look at that, there's a lot going on in the clerk's office and clerk's area, she does an excellent job of updating us on that, and we hope to have her back soon. An update on where we are in the planning director search. Nilsa should be reaching out to you, trying to set up a time for y'all to talk to our consultant. He wanted to make sure that he had every opportunity to talk to y'all, certainly about what you're looking for in the new planning director. I didn't, took some liberties probably feeling that Mr. Gallo and, and Mr. Byrd probably weren't quite as concerned about that as maybe the two new people were, to make sure that they're included in the process. But certainly, we're not trying to exclude you, if you feel like you wanna talk to them, that's fine. But just a few minutes spent when we try to connect would be great, 'cause that's part of the whole process of getting the right person on board, is making sure that, that our consultant knows from you, not from just me, or just from the HR director, what you're looking for. So please, when they, when we're reaching out to you, please try to help set up that time. And from my perspective, again, I just wanted to thank all, all of y'all, but particularly the three that are exiting, it's been great for me to be able to serve you and the citizens of Bradenton, I certainly appreciate each and every one of you. And then to my friends, Mr. Gallo, Mr. Rudisil, and Mr. Edwards, I would be coming front to the podium, but you know what, I cannot find my shoe for the life of me.
Oh, boy.
I got some coffee left. So thank you.
Do you have anything?
First and foremost, it's been an honor to work with the three of you, and at Public Works, we take the approach that we have 56,000 bosses, so I welcome you to your new job as one of my 56,000 bosses. The only other thing I wanted to add is tomorrow, we're having our sort of annual holiday barbecue for our employees. We had to retrofit it this year in order to make it work. We're doing drive-through pickup for prepackaged meals for people, so from 11 to 1 tomorrow, you may find our folks sitting around with some styrofoam containers, eating ribs and chicken at different locations throughout the city, but pay no mind to that. And with that, I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Retirement to you three, and God help us, 2020 can't leave fast enough.
Got that right.
Hello, hello. Do, just wanna, I had a couple of things. I just wanna let you know that tomorrow, we are gonna be doing our Community Haven Christmas Party that we do every year, be a little different. We won't be serving lunch like we normally do, we use a good hour to cook for them and, and serve the clients and everything. This time, we'll be going down due to COVID, bringing Santa Claus in the elf and delivering presents to staff, and basically just a drive-by, just a, we'll slide through and, short and sweet, but again, we'll get it done. I also wanna thank everybody, thank you three especially, I appreciate everything you've done for us and the fire department. Harold, I know when you came on, you were fire commissioner. I don't think we burdened you with a lot of problems, but, you know, you were always there for us, and we always appreciated your advice and your support, which is why I thank you. Mayor Poston, Wayne Poston, I can't, I don't even know where to start, I appreciate everything. You, I knew you back from the Bradenton Herald, and I remember having a conversation with Doug Huffman, about what a great mayor that you would make and buddy you have. It's been great, you supported us, you supported the fire department. And again, kinda like Mary Ann said, you know, if you had a problem, you know, you came to you and you, you had us work through it, and I appreciate that, you always had good advice, so thank you, appreciate it. Man, I guess it was back in 88 when I came on, so 32 years ago, I remember taking the agility test at the fire department, the old Station One, and getting through with it, and when I saw you, you walked up to me and said, get a haircut and I'll see you on Monday. Yeah, I appreciate it, everything you've done for me. You've supported me, I know as councilperson, you've always said, you know, your door's open, and if I ever had an issue, had any problems, come see you. I tried to stay clear of your office, but I knew you were always there if I needed any help, anything. And again, the, the support, man, I can't thank you enough. We go way back, actually, I remember you from, from Little League. So it goes way back, 32 years for me, seemed like a long time, but, man, I don't know, that day seemed like it was just yesterday. Again, I just wanna thank everybody, appreciate it, enjoy your retirement, thanks for all.
Thank you, Chuck.
I have, I have one comment about that. If it weren't for Doug Huffman and his support of the union and support of the fire department, I would never have been mayor. And Doug is a lifelong friend. Love you.
I'm still not gonna do my speech, because there's no crying in policing, but I, I will tell you all, before I tell you what I really need to tell you, that it really has been a pleasure serving with all of you collectively. I know that the way we get things done is not individually, but collectively by, by this group, and, you know, I've been here five years, and, and the growth and what I've seen within the community has been fantastic, which leads me to last night's event honoring the badge. A lot of y'all don't know this, but that was an initiative begun 12 years ago by Mayor Poston and Pastor Don Sturiano, and I will tell you, even in the past few years, it's grown from us being able to provide $25 gift cards to 25 kids, or about 50 when I got here, to last night, serving over 100 children with $50 gift cards to Walmart. And that was absent what Councilwoman Barnaby and Mayor Lick Brown and I got to do, walk through Walmart. walk through Walmart handing out $25 gift cards to families who we truly saw could use it. And that's a legacy that will continue long after you're gone. We started off, I know, early on with 5,000 last night. I think our total earnings that we can apply towards next year is $10,000. And that also blends into Saturday's event, our Fill the Truck. We've always had some great success with that. On Saturday, we collected over 4,000 toys, 4,000 toys for Hope Family Services. We kind of thought that would be it. Since Saturday, we've received almost 200 packages in the mail of toys. Publix came and dropped off 40 boxes of toys. Dollar Tree came and donated a couple hundred toys. So we actually have identified Manatee Children's Services, who, who help to foster kids in our community as going to be our, our next group that we deliver those to this week. And I, I bring that up again just to, to say that what we do, we all do together. And if, if anything else, you know, we've, we've left, you all have left a, a legacy of, of giving and of love. And particularly in this holiday season, it, it couldn't be more important. And so thank you all for allowing the police department to, to serve you all in, in that way. And thanks for being a great mentor and a great friend. Thanks for teaching me how to make the perfect martini because I need it more often lately, from time to time. And really thank you, thank you for everything.
I'd love to share my skills.
Absolutely.
Did we miss, Scott, do you have anything?
Just briefly, to our departing officers, I was just thinking this morning about all the years that, that we've worked together here and all the time that we've, that we've spent. No, but, but really, I do thank you. I've enjoyed working with all of you and thank you for your service. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve. Wish you all the best in your, your next endeavors and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and, and happy holidays.
Bradenton Housing Authority service in the past. All right, did we miss anybody? Mr. Gallo?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to say something. Chief Edwards was, was up here. My memory bank blew out the wall. Those two gentlemen, Doug Huffman and Chuck Edwards, I was involved with them in Little League football. And I'm saying, here they are, grown men that have, that have served this community for all these years and it just all of a sudden realized, where in the hell did all the time go? Unbelievable. I love them guys. The most important question I ask a man before I hired him to the fire department was, "Did you play sports?" Because being a firefighter is a competitive job. You're fighting sometimes by yourself, something that's tough to control. And they all did it and they all did it great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me take that time.
We want to thank MBTV too. They do a great job for us, super people. So anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Need anything else? For my last time, stand adjourned.